Let's start up, start out with item 1.2. Well, before we go on to the next item of the agenda, you have to call the closed meeting to a close. Well, you're quite demanding tonight. Well, I might be rusty, Mr. Mayor, but not that rusty. Make someone to move that we call the closed meeting to an end. I'll move that this be so, Mr. Mayor. Beat resolved that the closed meeting be ended so that we may enter into the committee of the whole meeting. Moved by Councilor Zant and seconded by Councilor Lalland. So let's go on to item 1.2. Beat resolved that we accept the hiring of Mr. Martin Irwin as manager of community relations and that he be subjected to a provisional period of six months and be resolved that Mr. Irwin's salary be pegged at level one, class four of the non-unionized salary grid of non-unionized employees. Fine. 1.3, beat resolved that council be hereby authorized that Mr. Dave Darje's contract be extended for two days per week until June 30, 2018, at his current rate, to be funded by the operating budget of staff vacancies, relevant charges, and staff consulting resources if required. Now moved by Councilor Lalland and seconded by Councilor Levert. All those in favor? Carry them. Thank you. Would someone care to read item 9.4 now on your described document? I don't have item 1.4. I do have item number 2. Well, that council ratifies to negotiate in the negotiated collective agreement between the Clarence Rockland Township and the Volunteer Firefighters Association for new agreement for the years covering 2018 to 2021 and that $30,000 covering the costs associated with this agreement to be transferred from the contingency fund from the operating budget and that council authorize the mayor and the city clerk to enter to a signed agreement with regard to the new agreement. Seconded by Councilor Belleguet. All those in favor? Carry them. Thank you. Is that it? Fine. A directive has been issued also for the sale of a parcel of land. Fine. Let's... Beat resolved that bylaw 2018-03 being confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of the 15th of January 2018 be adopted. Seconded by Councilor Lalland. All those in favor? Carry them. Thank you. Closing of the meeting at 10:05. Let's... And the committee of the whole meeting has now been opened at 10:06 PM. Let's go on now to the committee of the whole. Adoption of the agenda? I move that the agenda be adopted as presented. Moved by Councilor Grimaud, seconded by Councilor Levert. All those in favor? I'd just like to withdraw item 5.1 if I may, Mr. Mayor. Fine, fine. Thank you. No pecuniary interests? Fine. No petitions? Question period? No one... Oh, announcements! Oh, oh! I thought I'd skip that item right by everyone, under everyone's noses. I'd just like to advertise that the Saint-Basquale Carnival will begin on the 24th of January until the 29th of January. There'll be ice skating evenings, movie nights, draft nights, any other announcements. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to seize this opportunity to congratulate the Bourget Volunteer Association. Councilor Levert and myself attended the last Saturday events that were set up in Bourget. There are things that I've never seen in any municipality. They've distributed over $50,000 to individual volunteer groups. I thought we were dealing with the Trillium Foundation at one point in time. Well, I deemed it, I baptized it as the Bourget Foundation. You know, they hold, they post bingo games each and every week and they distributed $50,000 throughout the community. Councilor Lalland, the same thing also occurred last Saturday in Clarence Creek. There was a parishioner association that was involved in an event that hosted over 150 participants. Mr. Mayor accompanied me to hand over the annual trophy to the most deserving volunteer. I agree, Mr. Lalland, that those type of events are quite important ones, important events. Without any volunteers, without volunteers in any communities, it's hard to have things progress, especially, you know, Mrs. Poiret de Bourget and Mrs. Mercedes Abidal in Clarence Creek that work very hard in organizing similar type events. I'd just like to mention, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, it's unfortunate that the city of Clarence Rockland does not have any such organization. We should try to organize such events. Well, they rely on volunteers and those locales we've just mentioned, I know, but... We should try and do the same here in Clarence and Rockland. Fine, let's keep on going. The petition policy, are you not going to... Don't you give us a report with regards to the United Counties? Well, they didn't, I didn't have much to say. I was over in Jamaica at that point in time. But there's one thing I'd like to mention, however. I'd just like to have you keep in mind that the Prescott Russell residence and once again, Mr. Saint Amour stated that they've incurred a deficit of $5 to $6 million. That means that our part of the contribution that Clarence Rockland gives out to the United Counties and plus Prescott Russell supports this establishment that runs deficit each and every year. And if we take a look at what other centers do that come up with a balanced budget at the end of the year, that makes no sense. I'm just wondering what's happening. I've spoken to some individuals telling, who told me candidly that there were needless expenditures, there were a whole mess of problems with regards to this $5.6 million deficit with regard to the Prescott Russell residence, that housing 50 individuals, all in all. Even half would be enough to inject funds that would allow us to build two residences anew by the year 2025. It's quite ridiculous and it's, I can guarantee you folks that I'll bring that to everyone's attention next week. Let me tell you this, Mr. Mayor. I had occasion to speak to Mr. Stefan Betz last weekend. I told him that we had until Monday, January 8, to put forward a request to be part and parcel of the advisory board that's hosted by the province with regard to the Highway 17, 174 tranction. Mark Lucci, I recall, considered all municipalities' requests and even if roadways did not belong to municipalities making requests per se, those people attended advisory committee meeting and made presentations. Those who wanted to take part in advisory board meetings needed to send their request by the 8. Those who wish to make their submissions in writing have until the 19th of January. We have to follow up on this. I remember that the committee sits down and takes a look at who made a request for what. And if we haven't come up with a request for the 174, Highway 17 project, things might just grind to a halt. Fine. Item 9.1 then. Let's go on now. Councilor Levert?
The committee of the whole recommends that council adopt policy ADM 2018-02 with regards to petitions. Seconded by Councilor Zant. I just want to make sure here that we we just adopted directives with regard to that. There were none beforehand. And now we're, we've also fine tuned a template with regard to that also. Fine. Item 9.2, developers' meeting. Councilor Lalland? Yes, Mr. Mayor? Let me see. Whereas the infrastructure and planning department convened a meeting with the city's developers and builders on December 13, 2017, and whereas a number of significant development issues were discussed at this meeting and whereas report number INF 2018-018 provides an overview of the discussions and action items arising out of the December 13, 2017 meeting, that report number INF 2018-018 be received for information purposes. Seconded by Councilor Belleguet. Any questions? Yes? There are two side issues that caught my attention in all of this. I had occasion to discuss some of this with you. But one of those two points is this. When the developers stated that many of the plans are quite old, those that apply to Orion Ridge and others, and it becomes quite unfair for those new developers that wish to develop new projects here in town because they're not playing with the same set of rules as the previous developers. I now have, I believe that we have to oversee and overhaul this situation. Residents, for example, that wish to add something to their homes such as, you know, add on a deck or a pool, they're, they have to fill out a whole bunch of paperwork, but they're not helped along in doing so. The comments I received the most are those, "The municipality doesn't help me in filling out the paperwork or doing what I need to do to accomplish what I need to accomplish." And I believe that this has, this issue has risen through discussions, through community, committee-related discussions that we've had every two weeks. Councilor Adivaol? Well, I believe that we added to a second meeting with developers. I believe it's a step in the right direction. I like the rapport that we're creating with the developers that we're meeting with, but I'd like to, I'm just wondering what we're doing with those comments that we receive from developers. Now, will your department improve relationships we've had with developers? I'd like to determine what kind of actions will be taken, will be taken based upon their remarks and their suggestions. What does the administration do once we receive comments? Sometimes, you know, there might be heated discussions involved, but we do receive some extraordinarily well-intentioned comments on the part of developers. And what is your view of what needs to be done in the next six months to meet, to deal with everyone's requirements?
Well, I believe that we've reviewed all of the comments that we've received. We've implemented pre-consultation needs and we're in the process of implementing annual work plans inherent to individual departments and will need to determine how to go about incorporating all of those suggestions we've received, implement them in a concrete fashion and that they be implemented through those individual departments that they impact, and also to ensure that these meetings remain pertinent and to have developers feel that things are progressing, that we're, we need to give them a feedback, feedback as to what has been done since our last meeting. Well, what I'd like to see is to delineate those actions that need to be taken and the net result of what needs to be achieved. And we receive comments, you know, "Here's our action plan and this is what needs to be done in the next six months." If developers phone us up, we can tell them then, "Well, in keeping with what was told to us, this has been done." If some developers say, "Well, you know, this has been raised, but that has not been done yet", well, we're in a better position to answer them then. Councilor Zant? Thank you. My question's been answered, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just to add on to what Ken has mentioned, because there are a few items in your report that specifically states that you will review this from a department's standpoint and determine what needs to be done from this point on until the next meeting. If there's something that you decide in your office, we need to be advised of what you will be deciding upon so that we can advise the developers of what will be done. Fine. All those in favor? Carry. Go on with the operational budget report, November 2030. Report FIN 2017-048 being the financial operating budget status for the period ending November 30, 2017, be received as information. Seconded by Councilor Sima. I can tell you that I'm a bit disappointed when I took a look at this report. I didn't expect to incur such a deficit with regards to our daycare centers. I thought we'd resolved those problems two years ago. I thought we'd just done away with those problems. I'd like to have a monthly report given to council each and every month from this point on to determine where we're heading because, you know, we're dealing with a $500,000 deficit here. It's quite a serious matter and I don't know how we wound up in this, with this here. Ms. Collier, Mr. Boucher, what's happening here? How will we go about fixing this?
Well, the deficit really is made up of two components. A part of that deficit, approximately $220,000, is directly linked to salaries and social benefits. So there was a discrepancy or a shortfall that was incurred during the last fiscal exercise that we entered into. And the other component was, is directly linked to lower user fees because of lower number of users of services we offer. Also, we were called upon to move the daycare center facilities. This should have been done at the beginning of January and it was, the moving date was pushed further on and pushed further on. Let me be honest with you that throughout the course of last December, I analyzed what needed to be done and once the analysis is over and done with, we'll have to incur a financial shortfall of some $230,000 some odd thousand dollars that we'll have to address in the next few weeks. Indeed. And we might address this at the next meeting. Well, I'll be in Jamaica at the next council meeting, but I would certainly like to be in attendance to shed light on all the challenges that needed to be met when dealing with Mrs. Boris. I won't be able to attend the beginning of February meeting, but on the second meeting, during the course of the second meeting in February, I'll be there to deal with this issue along with Mrs. Boris and Mr. Chubainvin. We have quite a challenge before us in 2018. Look, what were we discussing? Budgets. Wasn't everything looked into? Well, the first $200,000 item, I was not aware of. We noticed it at the end of November. That's part and parcel of the $500,000 shortfall that we've alluded to. Now, the other part came up these last few weeks with regard to the daycare center. Are you saying now that we have less users, users now than before? So is the same thing happening that what happened with the public transportation? The higher the rates, the lower the number of users? Well, no. We closed the Kerwezel daycare center and there was one daycare center decided to close its door during the summertime. So we lost clients because of this. When a preschool child, for example, does not want to be shuttled from one daycare center to another and to another during the course of one year, you see. And we know that following the assessment of rates offered to parents, we have $220,000 of income that was over and above what was expected. We have a list of expectations with regard to preschool children. Yes, preschool needs. We have a lot of tools right now available and we have to tackle individual issues to ensure that free space is filled as quickly as possible. Well... Now, what I don't understand is how come you came up with a shortfall of such a magnitude with regards to salaries? Well, the salary component is a separate entity. It's a separate component. I can't elaborate with regards to this at this point in time. Well, if you close daycare centers, you have, of course, a reduced number of clients. There was a mistake that slipped by with regard to the basic budget whereby benefits had not been calculated at their proper rate. The salary remained, the salaries remained. Federico, can you help me out with regard to this?
Yes. Now, this was explained in the consolidated 2018 budget as Mr. Boucher had mentioned. There were some benefits that had not been properly tabulated as well as remnants of the 2017 budget side benefits that had not been tabulated. But we should have saved on salaries because we didn't have as much income as anticipated. Let me tell you this. Now, in a group of 14 children, you have, you're obtaining 14 sources of income. If you have 10 children, you have the same ratio of employees, but you only have 2.10 sources of income, you know. So we need to maximize groups. So what I mean by assessing situations by, with, by using past mechanisms, everything was assessed with a view of 16 sources of incomes. But we know that users vary from month to month. So a potential group of 16 that only has 13 children, well, the budget will be tabulated reflecting 13 children instead of 16. We anticipate $200,000 more than what we receive as income. So, this being said, is it possible to manage on a month-to-month basis and pay out on a month-by-month basis what needs to be paid out? And if you note that there is a group that is not as great in numbers as other groups and you can adjust your payouts accordingly. I understand what you're saying, but there's a group that'll pay for 12 in Bourget, even though I have a waiting list in Rockland, they don't certainly want to attend the daycare facilities in Bourget. That's why it's a complex matter, you see. If I take a look at the report. Of course, we've incurred a total deficit of $318,000 taking into account all departments and needs. Overall, the city is expecting a, expecting a deficit of $318,000, which is primarily to spring flooding events and daycare centers. There are other departments that compensate the shortfall, but my question is that if we remove the $175,000 flooding damage that we can't recoup, how will we go about paying the $318,000 remaining? Well, Mr. Mayor, the $318,000 includes library, $70,000. And they have their, their own financial income. The net amount then is $247,000 for the city of Clarence and Rockland. That includes flood contingencies that was mentioned beforehand. So we're going to tap into our reserves, our tax, we're going to tap into our tax stabilization reserves to... And this tax stabilization reserve, once we will have paid out the amount owing, how much will remain? Well, over in your bow, over, well, around $700,000. But we've also put in an accumulated surplus, an amount of hovering around the $300,000. Well, we come up with $318,000 less the daycare centers and you're saying that with our stabilization fund, this will bring down the amount to zero. We don't want to wind up with similar figures at the end of the year. Well, let me explain the matter further. When you take into account the accumulated surplus, those are reserves that are set apart. Those are not Main Street reserves. Now, let's say that we have a surplus one year and then we incur a deficit another year. These are all put in or tabulated in those reserves unless we receive, you know, contrary indications. But at the end of 2016, we were hovering around the $300,000. So the $247,000 projected deficit will be applied against this $300,000 surplus, but we'll bring that sum to zero. But we can't incur a $200,000 shortfall each and every year as Mr., as the mayor has alluded to. Fine.
What I don't understand? I just, we just went through a budget process. Why are we talking about this now? Why did we not know about this stuff beforehand? Why did we not know that these things are now haunting us now? I understand what Mr. Boucher has stated about Mr. daycare. Mr. Kehoe has said, "Well, $70,000 applies to the library." It's almost like a roving budget all over again now. Well, you see, the library, we knew about it. Okay, fine, but why are we still discussing losses? This should have been done at the budget. We should have known at the end of the year. How much, well, sometimes things happen because the year had not yet finished. Well, next year, let's just do it in January. Mrs. Collier?
So what we're looking at, right, is the year-end fiscal situation. We came to you in September and told you that we projected a deficit of $150,000 approximately because of the impact of the floods. Now, we had not at that time, well, we had been at the department at that point, Mr. Boucher had not picked up on the situation with the daycare. Fortunately, we had pluses and minuses with other departments. And also at that time, when we spoke to you, we did not know whether the province, well, we didn't have it in writing, whether the province was actually going to give us the money or not. Since then, we received that as of a week ago. I think you told me yesterday that we have the paper or document stating that we'll receive, pay the money. And we only know at the year end after we've done the budget. We're bringing you this information with what we felt comfortable with and what we're projecting. The situation with regard to the daycare matter is a situation that we have to deal with. Had we known, and probably we should have known in the budgetary docs we entered into, we should have known the daycare for sure. But the actuals with regard to the deficit was, has always been things we've tackled after the budget. It's the result of the year. It's, it was projected at 150 and now it's at 250. The last time the report was made to council, it was reported at 150, only the flood. And now it's up to 250 because of the pluses and minuses that have occurred in all departments. How much money did we get from the, we received 600, we got $642,000. $642,000 and 7%. It's a big picture. If we put the flood aside, the deficit of the city was $100,000. On a $38 million budget, that's not too bad. We never aim for a huge deficit, but if you take this deficit into consideration, the big picture, that's not all that much. And because we put this accumulated surplus aside to project ourselves in a fair view for the future and we won't know until, until the audit is done exactly what needs to happen. But we'll bring you that report in May, I believe, right? With regard to the audit, the final financial picture. Mr. Lalland? Did I hear you write deficit for flood? The expense would be 250 instead of, no, 150? The expense would be 250 instead of, no, 150, 153. That's what's reflected on this particular document. But my question is this, at this present time, have we put any expenses on the long-term debt besides that? At the end of December 31st, did we add up some long-term debt beside this deficit that we have now?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we didn't issue any new debt in 2017. We did not issue any? No, we did not issue any debt, but we made debt payments on our outstanding debt. So we've made debt payments of 1.7, well, was tax-supported, but in all, it's a bigger number than that.
It's a bigger number than that.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor then? Reinvestment project. Committee of the Hall recommends the council to mandate the coordinator of community services and management to continue its participation in a joint project to assess the yield. There's no cost to that, Mr. Wilson? Well, there is a cost, man-hours. Man-hours. I'm sorry. We need to second this motion first. Seconded by, yes, by Counselor Zan. I guess that we don't know because it's a project. Over the next three years, it's not going to cost us anything financially, but they want us to put a person on this committee or project. And do we know how many hours this project? Well, Mr. Wilson, the projected ask is for half-day a month, you know, to participate in a flood mitigation return on investment project that's funded by the federal government. That's what's funded by the project. When will the meeting be held? They'll come here for a lot of information gathering. They'll come to Clarence and Rockland for a lot of that. They're based in Ottawa, so there may be meetings in Ottawa or over the phone.
Or over the phone.
Well, I'm thinking the same as Mr. Lalonde is thinking, you know? You're taking part in a four-hour meeting, but then you're given 10 hours work to do after that, and then you have to take part in teleconferences, speaking for myself because that's how I do my work. But any type of work done to alleviate flood difficulties, there's nothing done at this particular time. That's how we're, I just want to make sure that if we say yes, that we take part in this project, that we be made aware of progress of this project. And we'll let Mr. Wilson tell us if it's really worth taking part in this project at the end of three years, you know, if we're told it's going to cost you so much to alleviate difficulties or hardships because of floods. Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe they spoke about this at the United Counties level, and the United Counties level is entering into a study with South Nation River Authority with regards to flood plans. Would you like to defer any final decision? No? I think we can decide on this right now. Let's go to the first meeting right now, see how it is. And if you don't feel, Mr. Wilson, that it's worthwhile, we'll just pull out of it. If it's something that's going to take many hours, not just four hours or 10 hours, well, we don't need that, as Mr. Lalonde stated. Counties are talking about doing something with the South Nation Conservation Authority. Maybe there won't be any need with it while things are said and done. You need to take a look at what needs to be done. Mr. Wilson? Why don't you talk to Louis Privo as to this? The big thing that they want is our information as to what happened with regard to our flood outside of the South Nation and Rideau Valley, because we don't have a conservation authority that oversees what happened on that stretch of the river. Hopefully, we'll get some information back once a proper study has been conducted. So let's go for the information and come back to us and let us know how things are working out, if it's worthwhile in your view. Is everybody in agreement with that? That's fine then. Let's go on now with the transportation master plan and active transportation master plan. Mrs. Sima recommend that council adopts a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign a contract with Stand Tech Consulting Limited in the amount of $102,715 for the execution of the transportation master plan and active transportation master plan. Seconded by Council of Bill Langit. Any questions? Go ahead. Was that included in our budget perspectives? It was included in our budgetary forecast. We've been out to tender? Well, I'm sorry, we have not yet been to tender with regards to this yet. That's something that we had occasion to discuss, Mr. Mayor, at the planning and land management committee meetings on many occasions. Well, I understand what you're getting at, but we came up with a global plan in 2005, and we have to take a fresh look at things now because of the expansion that Clarence and Rockland is undergoing at present. But what you're alluding to dealt with one specific region. All those in favor then? Carried. Last item on the agenda, distribution of grants for community activities. Counselor Lalonde? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Whereas the City of Clarence and Rockland received an amount of $10,000 from the United Counties of Prescott Russell to cover certain costs for cultural or recreational activities, the Committee of the Hall recommends to municipal council to accept the amount of $10,000 be granted as follows. $5,000 to the Ottawa River Festival, $3,000 to the Ottawa Day Celebration, $1,500 for artistic endeavors such as art exhibits at the City of Clarence and Rockland Cultural and Recreational Complex, and $500 to the Clarence Rockland Senior Games as recommended. Seconded? Fine. Seconded by Counselor Lalonde. Any questions? All those in favor then?
I had a question here. Are we talking about a second? Are we not thinking of giving any money to the country music festival? Yes. Any questions for department heads? I have one question. The patrolling officer will be on the road four hours a day? Will he or she? Yes. Will he be responsible or she be responsible to report any burnt-out streetlights? Well, that individual will be patrolling a segment or part of our streets and not our whole road network. Well, there are at least 20 burnt city lights that are burnt out. The entrance on Leport Street are all closed down. One on Marion has been burnt out, one at the corner of Julien and La Violette. There's another one that's burnt out of the corner of Edite and Sinvain. There are some burnt-out lights on Loyer Street, one at the corner here around Clarence area. We have a whole bunch of burnt-out streetlights. Why don't we just, you know, I'm not going to patrol all streets myself, I understand, but we're talking, we're dealing here with a particular segment. If there's a segment where there are no burnt-out LED lights, however, we'd, well, let's just put it this way, we can make the contractor aware of those lights that are burnt out, and he will take proper action. Well, there are some burnt-out lights on Codbay Street that have not yet been replaced. There's been a burnt-out light there for the past two months. It's easy for the patrolling officer to patrol all of our street network to at least indicate those lights that he can readily see have been burnt out and relay them to client services, you know? And I have to go back and take a look at the addresses to determine what lights have been burnt out. Counselor Lalonde? Or Mr. Lalonde? Now, because of the warm and cold climates that we're going through, alternating warm and cold climates, one of the things that the department has indicated to me was this, if it's determined that water is frozen past the control valve, the individual home's control valve, well, it behooves the homeowner to take proper action. I think we should take a look at having some plumbers made available. You know, if we are connecting homes to our water system, we need a plumber that work on the connections to be approved. And apparently, the town doesn't care about plumbers working here. Everybody, you know, I don't understand the logic. If a plumber is going to, you know, play around with our connections and thaw out a water line, then I believe this plumber should be, you know, agreed upon or, you know, or approved by the town. Doesn't have to have necessary documents, but at least approved by the City of Clarence and Rockland. Well, look, if you have a plumber's license, they're issued by the Province of Ontario, and if he's licensed by the Province of Ontario, well, it says it all. I know that when we worked on a water connection on a residence on Lambden Street, we had difficulties. We were, we need to be told who the plumber that performs the work is. We were told the panicked resident because he has no water at home, that he has to take care of this situation himself and hire a plumber. Well, you see, sometimes one doesn't know where to go and what door to knock at to obtain help. All a homeowner wants is to obtain help to, you know, get water to his home, and we have to help out a resident. He was told, you know, you have to phone up Clearwater. Clearwater says, well, no, we don't do this. We're not involved in thawing out water connection lines. I think that not everyone is equipped to work with a standpipe there. If a resident needs to be supplied with water, why don't we take a look at offering three or four plumbers that are city-approved? And if the resident needs to pay for their services, fine. If the town has to pay for them, that's fine. But I understand what you're getting at. Maybe we can draw up a list of those plumbers that are equipped and to perform the work that needs to be done. What I, if a new resident doesn't know much about anything and phones, you know, as far as who to phone and what to do, that resident might be encouraged to phone up the City of Clarence and Rockland. The City of Clarence and Rockland might supply him or her a list of suggested plumbers without necessarily telling that resident that he or she needs to hire the services of those individuals. But still, fine, fine. Any other questions then? No other questions? Fine, so, meeting then is adjourned at 10:45. Thank you.